I am called in this meeting as the Town of Silver City Council to order. Would you please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
A pledge of allegiance to the flag and the face of America, and to the Republic of which this stands, for measures indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
By way of announcement, Councilor Kano will be with us via the telephone tonight. The first item on the agenda requiring action is Proclamations. And since Celebrate Grant County Recovery Day is September the 17th, 2016, the town would like to acknowledge this. Is Mr. Jim Helgood here? Okay. That being the case, I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Whereas September is National Recovery Month, when our federal government promotes the societal benefits of prevention, treatment, and recovery from alcohol and drug use disorder, and whereas thousands of Grant County citizens are in recovery from drug and alcohol use, they have made a lifelong commitment to not use alcohol or drugs, and whereas their contributions make our families, businesses, and communities stronger, and whereas their acknowledged success is a beacon of hope to those still suffering from alcohol and drug use disorder. Now therefore, I Ken Ladner, Mayor of the Town of Silver City, Grant County, New Mexico, in view of the inherent value of this, do hereby proclaim September 17th, 2016, Celebrate Grant County Recovery Day, and urge everyone in our community to acknowledge, respect, and celebrate our fellow citizens in recovery, redouble our efforts to help those still suffering from mental health and substance use disorders, and join together as a community in celebrating this day. The next item on the agenda requiring action is Public Input. And the first name on the list is Susan Go Lightly. And I'd like to remind those who will be given public input that you have about five minutes to give your input, and if it looks like you're getting close to that limit, I'll give you a heads up. So first on the list is Susan Go Lightly.
Yeah, I'm, hi, I'm Susan. What? Okay, that sounds better. Hi, I'm Susan Go Lightly. I'm not sure, I'm also supposed to be speaking for the Agenda Item A.
Not yet.
But, okay, let me just, so, what I wanted to speak about, should I just go ahead and talk about the gay pride celebration, or wait?
Let anybody do that Agenda Item comes up.
Okay, sure.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. Next on the list is Lucy Whitmarsh, Executive Director of Main Street.
Good evening, Council, Mayor, city staff, and the community. I just wanted to let you know a little bit about the Taste of Downtown, which Main Street is coordinating for the September 3rd, which is in the Labor Day weekend. And we know from past comments, especially from Councilor Ray, that he's been really supportive of our having events on the Labor Day weekend to try to attract people to our community, and also for people that are here over the holiday weekend to have events for them to enjoy. So our Taste of Downtown is an opportunity for people to go to 14 tasting locations in our downtown on that Saturday, and it will be from 12 to 3:00. And I think that it will be a really fun community event, and also will help support interest in our downtown restaurants, and also in our downtown businesses, which is an economic driver. And then, in conjunction with it, the other events, and there may be more that I don't know about, but we're also with the Arts Council, is putting on the Print Fiesta Downtown, and then, as traditionally we have on the Labor Day weekend, also the Gem and Mineral Show. So I think it will be a really exciting weekend, and I hope you can all come out and enjoy it. Thank you.
Thank you, Lucy. And next on the list is Richard Monis.
Yes? Is it on? Yes, my name is Richard Monis, and I'm here from Santa Clara, and I've been advocating for the use of off-road vehicles, with this new legislature from a Senate Bill 207, 270, which allows and gives access, gives the county and municipalities the option to adopt an ordinance for the use of off-road. And I used to be an ATV driver for about three years, and now I bought a side-by-side, which is classified as a utility three-vehicle, and I've done some research, I talked to the Muslim police chief from Hurley, Barrett, Santa Clara, in Silver City, and I got their input, their advice, and they admit that, most of them admit that the UTV is the safest way off-road vehicle we can use. If you guys would adopt that ordinance, the UTV would be the safest, because it's got a roll cage, and it's got seatbelts, and it's, you can make it a sleeping car, and then appliance, headlights, the horn, headlights. And I bought mine, and I put it out there, so they could see it. And I think it contradicts a lot, you know, I've been researching about bicycles and motorcycles, and everybody has a preference, and I respect the preference, lanes of bicycles and motorcycles on the road, which don't have seatbelts, don't have roll cage, don't have, but I think it's everybody's preference, and I think it would be nice to be respected, you know? But the main thing is safety. And for me, the UTV, also called side-by-side, is a safe off-road vehicle that can be moved on paper road and streets, on a highway. It cannot be moved with highway, with, we give it a 65 and over, but it would be perfect for 180 from Santa Clara and Barrett and Silver City. And it's also, one of the things is the high cost of fuel. Where, it's very hard for us, you know, someone that are in a state of car or disability, that we can utilize these off-road vehicles, they only get about 35 to 40 miles a gallon, which would be nice, and it would help us, people with disabilities, you know, to afford the fuel. And that's about it, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. The next item on the agenda is Council Comments. Councilor Ayman Smith.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. I just want to acknowledge and thank the New Mexico Department of Transportation that is paving on Highway 90 and installing six-foot wide bike lanes, which was part of their plan, and I'm thrilled, because it just happened that that week that they started, two people came up to me and said, "It's really hard to ride on where the bridge was." So I wanted to say and acknowledge that gratitude.
Councilor Beadson.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to say that we have coming up, not this weekend, but the following weekend, a veritable plethora of activities in town, so I think that there's something for everyone, and I hope folks will be out and about, enjoying all the various activities. I get really excited when we have so many, just because we have some folks that think that nothing happens, but there's a lot going on, so enjoy yourself. I also want to just say a few gentle reminders, that if you witness a violation of an ordinance, which is a law, if you're witnessing it, it's occurring, and it's not something that demands 911, like if it's not, you know, some of those horrible things that can happen in the world, please call Central Dispatch, which is, is a non-emergency number, which is 388-8840. Because one of the most critical linkages that we have with any ordinance, whether it's federal, state, or local, is that witnesses, residents, and citizens will call and report violations, so that the appropriate town departments, if it's something after the fact, or if it's occurring, that response time can increase. I have to say, I love getting your emails, but I'm not the person to solve the problem. Our staff are excellent at doing that, whether they be the fire department, the police department, our code enforcement, they will hop on it. If you, if it's something that you've encountered, illegal dumping, please call those departments, or at least you can still call Central Dispatch, non-emergency, for fire and police, to at least let them know, and they'll send an officer out, or whatever that needs to go. And I don't have code enforcement's number in front of me, but they have a message machine, you can leave a message for them, and they will hop on it as well. I also just another gentle reminder, that the phone number that is published for me on the Town of Silver City's website, is a message phone. It's sort of like a virtual phone, there's no office, there's no one answering it, but I do receive a text, it converted into text message, sometimes I can't understand it, that goes through email. And so I will get back to you, but please, if you haven't heard from me for 24 hours, just realize it could be that I may be out, I may be out of town, you know, it could be any number of things. I will get back to you as soon as I possibly can, and the only way I really can do that is if you leave me a phone number. Sometimes it'll pick up the phone number you're calling from, but you need to leave a phone number in some instances. And on the side of the email, I think folks have realized that I'm wearing these two little things, and I have been for quite some time, I'll continue to wear these as I deal with something, but I will respond to you, it's just that I'm using voice command, so sometimes I can't, I don't catch all the errors, and it takes quite a while to do it, so that it at least sounds like you can understand what I'm saying. So bear with me as I go through this, and understand about the message phone, and I will get back to you if I can, and as soon as possible that I can. So that's it, and I look forward till Labor Day weekend, we have a lot going on. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilor Kano.
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to let you all know that right now I'm now a trustee for the 38th Annual New Mexico Conference on Aging. Today was our first day of workshops, and I've already learned a whole lot of great things that I'm hoping to bring back to, to people and students in the community. I would also just like to thank Jamie Embig and her staff for the community development meetings that she is hosting, she had one in District 4 last week, and it went very, very well, there was a lot of really good community input, so I'm looking forward to the next step of the process. And I know the other meetings are coming up, so I hope that the other councils have a lot of good input at their meetings as well. And just the last thing I'd like to say is that next week I will again be out of town, myself, Councilor Beadson, and Clerk Mackey are all going to be in Hobbs for the New Mexico Municipal League Annual Conference. I think there may be some other people going with those, I don't have to be sure. So I look forward to learning a lot of useful things and bringing those back as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one question, and it is, Mr. Brown, can you ask the chief to give us a report on a cellphone, when it's time for staff reports, please? And also, I am going to have a District 3 meeting at the Silver Theatre on the 20th of this month, and it'll be at 6:00 o'clock, and Ben is buying a popcorn, right, Ben? I'm going to say something about the flag, and I'm going to say it as a veteran, and please bear with me. The American flag should be for American veterans, whether it be the police department, or it be the fire department, or it be veterans that fly at half-mast. I don't believe that the flag should be flown at half-mast for anything else other than that. We all have a choice to be in the military, or to be a police department, or a fire department. It is only right, and I'm just speaking as a veteran, it's only right to honor the veteran. If they want us to fly the flag at half-mast, then they have to do it every day, because every day there are some soldiers killed throughout the world. And yet, we don't hear about that in the news media, we never do. And I don't mean to degrade anybody, but please let us honor the veteran, because they have tried everything to do what we are doing now. Is it right? It could be. Is it a party of life? It is a party of life. And with that, thank you.
Mr. Brown, I think there was a question to you.
Hi, yes, I'll go ahead and. Under reports, I'll start with that, and then I'll do my reports.
Councilor Beadson.
Thank you, Mayor, for coming back around a second time. I forgot to mention that District 1 Coffee House of Plan meeting is taking place this Thursday at 6:00 at the Silver High School Little Theatre, and I think that we can make room for you, even if you have an RSVP, we want your input, so please attend, it's from 6:00 to 7:00, this Thursday, at the Silver High School Little Theatre. And I'm not, I don't think I'm stepping out of bounds to say that if you've missed one of the other ones, or can't make the one that Councilor Ray is holding in District 3 on the 29th at the Silco, doesn't mean you can't, if you don't live in District 1, you can still come, because we want your valuable input from the citizens, so just wanted to let everybody know about that. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Any other comments from the council? Councilor Ray?
I've got one, thank you. This is from Mr. Brown. Have you been, put up signs, are you going to cellphone throughout the?
Yes, I've been cell phoning signs, and on each hour we come into town.
Okay, thank you. And one other remark, thank you, Mr. Monis, I appreciate your input on the ATV and UTV, I appreciate it, and I know we all appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other comments?
Okay.
Okay. Next item on the agenda is Changes to the Agenda. Does the council want to make any changes?
No, sir.
Okay. Next item is Approval of Minutes of the August 9, 2016 Regular Meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Ayman Smith.
Evening, Mr. Mayor. I'm ready to approve the minutes of the regular council meeting of the Town of Silver City on August 9, 2016.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilor Beadson.
I second the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Is there any discussion, any changes?
Okay.
Those in favor of approval of a minute, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay? Motion carries. The next item on the agenda is Reports. Mr. Brown.
You go ahead and tell your question. Councilor Ray's your question.
Mayor of City Council asked to answer the question. We started enforcement pretty much on July 23rd. Last week, I counted out citations for operations, and two operations, we issued 35 citations, which were a combination of both Texan and use of a cellphone. We'll continue running operations. We did receive money from Sacred New Mexico for overtime to run specific operations for distracted driving. We have some funds left in that. Additionally, starting, I believe at the end of September, first of October, we will receive additional funding. So we'll continue working that. It's a serious issue. When I've been in a police unit, I drove around last week in a marquee, didn't see any use of telephone, because I was in a marquee. However the issue is, is that when I'm in my unmarked unit, I see it legally still, and it's still an issue. People need to adhere to those hands-free. Additionally, at Mountain View, on Harris, I even have a hamster cellphone, sorry, at the setting limits on Harris. So there's a lot of signs out there to indicate that this is a hamster jurisdiction.
Councilor, any questions? Councilor Beadson.
Do you have one on Highway 15?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? I have one question, Mr. Brown. I thought we were going to put several signs throughout the city in high-traffic areas. Is that not happening?
No, we initially, prior discussions, we started with all the, the ones that we talked about in town, those were put up, I believe, and they're all on the highway. Peter did purchase, I believe, extra signs, so we do have them, if you would like, we can work with the chief to identify where would be some additional sites to put some more signs. We already have them on hand, because Peter wanted to be ready, just because we needed to put some more up. So I'll just go ahead and have the chief identify additional areas where we can use Peter's sites.
Okay. Any other questions? Just thank you. Thank you. Okay, Councilor Ray.
There are signs of cell phones on very busy intersections, like on Cooper Street, like on Hudson, so people could be more aware.
We can put more signs on. The thing that I just want to stress is, the more signs you put up, the less they pay attention to it.
That's true, true.
So, but we can put them into higher traffic areas.
We have some suggestions, please get ahold of me and let me know. We can put additional on Hudson Street, Pope Street, Silver Heights, most of the border roadways that lead into the county or jurisdiction has the signs, so we can put additional signs inside the city limits.
Thank you. You guys are doing a good job.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Councilor Kano, did you have anything?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Mr. Brown, would you like to?
I've got some. As we, Mayor and I met with Silver City Radio, representatives from Silver City Radio, and they wanted to start a project whereby we already have cameras on, a camera on City Hall, that we're using for the police department. We didn't need to use it anymore, but Silver City Radio would like to mount a radio and a camera on City Hall, so that we could attach the view from the Town of Silver City website, so you could go and look what's happening downtown. And so, and also, they'll be able to attach it to other partners of the Town of Silver City, so that anytime you, like the Fourth of July, if you're on the other side of the country, you can get onto the Silver City website and watch the parade from the City Hall, from City Hall to top of City Hall, the bike race, the downtown critter. You guys have seen the picture that's in my office from up there, it's a really nice view. So I just wanted to let you know that we're going to be doing that. We've had, the meter project was completed at the end of May fully, and we've had two months that the, we've had billings in June and July of this last, of this year. And, you know, the unaccounted water was up and down, because, you know, we had the old meters, it took us two weeks to read each route, so there was long periods of time that it spread out. Well, now we have the more accurate meter, and we're able to read the meters in two days. We still have the two routes, one that's built on the 15th, and one that's built on the 22nd, I mean 26th, but those are read like two days before we do the billing, but it only takes one day to do the reading. Well, the unaccounted water, prior to the installation, averaged between eight and 10 and a half percent, with all the extra water conservation measures that we have put in place. June, it was 4%, July, it was 4.1%. So we, for the short, the short time that they've been in place, it's been a huge success, because 4% is unheard of. So let's see how it works through the long term, as we get a full year under our belt. But I think that was really some exciting news, because it's, I mean, you don't hear a 4%. And then I did talk to you guys earlier, the last few council meetings, I let you know that the ISC grant for the meters, I have been working on. I think we've got all the kinks worked out, everything is, actually, we've already sent the grant in, but I guess now they want a resolution from the council authorizing me to sign the contract, and so, even though I've already signed them, but, so, it was too late to put it on this agenda, for that resolution, so we'll put it on the next agenda to do that. Okay, so, that's about it for me. Do you guys have any questions?
Councilor Beadson.
Thank you. So, Mr. Brown, did we have to replace many water pipes in doing this? Is that also helping with the unaccounted, the drop in the unaccounted?
No, no, everything that we've seen, the change in the unaccounted, I've got to pretty much contribute all to the change in the water meter system, because we have not done any water system upgrades during that period. The next one will be the CDVG project up on Chihuahua Hill, the third phase that we're going to be doing, but that's just replacing old system. We're looking, we're going to, do you remember what it's called? Why do I, I couldn't even remember what it was called, to tell James this morning, but it's, you know, the Water Works Building, the, right there where we, where people come and get bulk water from the fire hydrant. We're going to, we've been looking at systems, so that people can come in, and they have to pay a credit system, so that they can get the water, because there's, that, what we have right now is just an honor system. And, I'm sorry, but that's not, that doesn't work very, at all. And so, you know, we're going to put that in place. The other large user that is unaccounted is the fire department that do the fire hydrant testing. We're working on getting that stuff, not specifically meters, but getting a lot better estimates to identify how much is coming out of that, as well as working with the utilities department to get some estimates on how much water is being lost, on the water breaks that they're working on. So we're getting, we're going to try to get as much accounted of water identified, see how much has been taken out of the system, how much we're losing from water leaks somewhere in the system. So it's been, it's been very successful up to this point, you know, the ESCO that was approved by the State Engineers Office requires that we do leak detection in the water system on a regular basis. We haven't set that up yet, but I don't know how much closer you can get to zero than 4%. So, you know, we're going to set that up. So, you know, we're going to set that up once we start working on the software upgrades, which probably won't work until the beginning of next fiscal year. And we're going to be using this grant money that we're getting back from the ISC to fund that, that part of our project.
I guess the other question, or it's not really a question, but we're still providing a service that if someone needs to look at the detail on their water bill, they can come to you, I mean, if they think that they might have a leak in their system?
Yes, they can, they can, they can call. We had one situation where an individual emailed me and we, we sent them the graphs and everything, and so, it's still going to make them happy, but, you know, you've, if they contact us, I can get them that information. That will be part of the software update to see upgrade, see if we can attach that to an Internet system where they have an account that they can go ahead and use. Yes. So they don't have to call in, they can just set up an email account, an account.
But for the time being, they can call, and if they have any questions, they should call to see if there's, that's one way of detecting where the leak is, at least, that it might be.
Yeah, we'll actually, if requested, we'll send the meter readers actually out there to help you identify where the leak is. If it's not within your house, you know, if it's a leaky toilet or a running toilet or if it's a leak on your property somewhere where they can help identify a wet spot on the ground somewhere that, or where there's weeds growing that you don't have anything else growing, you know, our guys will go out and help if requested.
Thank you for providing that service because I know some folks are really interested in that. And so I told them that just all you have to do is call or email, and we can get that done for them. I have a question on how the progress is going on with folks are still putting glass in the recycling or are they, have they ceased to do that? Are they still, are we having issues with still having glass?
No. We've always had a little bit of problems with it on the, from the solid waste authorities side. We're still picking up the curbside stuff, there's a little bit of that, but not very much because the guys are doing it by hand. The commercial side that we stopped in July, we're not having any problems with that. The businesses have had to increase their garbage collection to accommodate for that or they're taking it out on their own. You know, that's up to them, and that can be part of the one ton. But on the residential side, we don't have a lot of problems right now. This is going to be a big project for code enforcement, and we do start the curbside recycling of the automated system because, you know, it's going to be a big dumpster and people are going to be putting trash, glass, the whole thing. So I'm sure that it's going to take a little while to get all that ironed out.
And when is that projected again to begin with?
We're hoping sometime in October, but I don't think it's going to happen until the beginning of the year sometime.
Just because?
We're still waiting for the trucks, the bid for the containers still hasn't come in. We've been having some issues with the vendors wanting to bid it based on the cost of plastic and things, and we're working that out.
Well, thanks for the updates. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, I was excited when Sabrina called about the, about the live feed because I think that can be a real important tool for tourism and the people who want to get a view of Silver City who are thinking about relocating somewhere. And I talked to her also yesterday, and they're looking at the possibility of putting one up on Signal Peak to give a panoramic view of Silver City, so.
And we've, like you said, we've already got all the infrastructure to the top of City Hall to get, you know, to get it going pretty quickly. Also, James just reminded me that, you know, I think we had told you a while back that we had an agreement between us and Daming for the building official services. We have been waiting for a long time to sign up for the approval from CIB, but we got it today. Main reason is because we finally called Senator Morales this morning, and we got the approval letter this afternoon.
Yeah, it's a win-win for Silver City, I think. Next item on the agenda is item eleven A. The approval slash disapproval of two public celebration permit applications and a waiver of NMSA nineteen seventy-eight sixty dash six B dash ten of the prohibition of dispensing of alcohol beverages within three hundred feet of a church or school. Event information. The first Silver City Gay Pride Festival to be held on September the seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, on the Old Elks Lodge patio at three fifteen North Texas Street, Silver City, New Mexico, sponsored by the LGBT Grant County. Liquor license holder information. One, Little Toad Creek Brewery number six seven zero two one, HC sixty-eight, box one thirty-four, Silver City, New Mexico. Two, Little Toad Creek Distillery number six three zero zero four, HC sixty-eight, box one thirty-four, Silver City, New Mexico. We have Susan Go Lightly is one of the presenters. Is there anyone from the Little Toad? Okay, I think it's, it's all yours then.
Is it on? Okay, oop, I turned it off. Okay, I'll try again. Yeah, I'm representing LGBT Grant County, LGBT Grant County. It's a organization of people that are, you know, gay, bi, trans, lesbians, transgender people, which there's more in this town than you would think. Approximately altogether, maybe eight to nine percent of this community, so that's a lot, and maybe more because it's sort of a place where people come that LGBT people see that this is a tourist location and they come here. Anyway, so we're planning our first pride celebration. We're very excited about it. We're going to have two stages. One stage will be on the patio of the Old Elks Club, and then one stage will be in the intersection of Bullard Street and Texas Street. And we'll have people coming from all over the state. We'll have Miss Pride New Mexico and Mr. Pride New Mexico. We'll have Equity New Mexico with a stand, and we'll have quite a few acts, drag queen acts, and we're going to have a puppy dog drag show, which we think will be a lot of fun, and then speakers. And so, and three or four different bands, illusion band, evolution band. I think it's going to be a big event with lots of booths and vendors. And so, where's the, we want to have a beer garden, and it'll be put on by Little Toad, and it'll be on the patio of the Elks Club, and they will be responsible for fencing in and checking for ID. And it's already, beer and wine is on that patio from Vicki's Restaurant, so it's not asking for anything new. And so, I don't, I'm sure anything else you need to know. The time will be, well, the time of the alcohol sales on the patio will be from approximately two to about eight o'clock.
I didn't hear the permits from the city already.
Yes, we have the permits. We got ten two curbs, we couldn't make it tonight, has to, the waiver for being within three hundred feet of a church, and we have the permit for celebration.
Any questions from the council?
I have one.
Councilor Conno?
Actually, it's more of a comment, but it's something you need to consider in the future. If you're going to continue to have the beer garden on the patio, the entrance to the patio is not handicap accessible, and handicap people like to drink too, so you'll need to deal with that at some point. I'm not going to ding you this first time, but it really needs to be accessible from now on. I know that that entrance has like two or three steps, so it won't be.
Thank you, Councilor Conno. I appreciate you bringing that up. I should have been more aware of that, and yes, we will consider that in the future.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I've been asked to welcome the group on behalf of Silver City, and I'm looking forward to doing that. Do I hear a motion? Councilor Ray?
Thank you. Thanks for having us to do something like this. It's something that a lot of people don't like, but get over it. I mean, it's true. It's a quality of life. It is a quality of life. It's your guys' choice, just like everybody has a choice. Fine, if you guys like that, that's fine. This is a quality of everybody. We're only here for a very short time. So it's too late to say, well, I should have done it. No, let's do it now. That's the way I feel about it. And again, your permit says here alcohol begins at one.
Oh, sorry.
One to two eighty M. You have all the paperwork done. And with that, I make a motion to approve a two public celebration permits, permit application and a waiver of NMSA nineteen seventy-eight sixty dash six B dash one zero that the prohibition of dispensing of alcoholic beverages within three hundred feet of a church or school. Event information. The first Silver City Gay Pride Festival to be held on September seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, on the Old Elks Lodge patio at three fifteen North Texas Street, Silver City, New Mexico, sponsored by the, sponsored by LGBT Grant County. Liquor license holder information. Number one, Little Toad Creek Brewery, six seven zero two one, HC eight, HC sixty-eight, box one thirty-three, box one thirty-four, Silver City, New Mexico. Number two, Little Toad Creek Distillery, six three oh oh four, HC sixty-eight, box one thirty-four, Silver City, New Mexico.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilor Edison?
A second, the motion is stated.
Okay, a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion, please say aye. Any opposed, nay. Motion passes. Thank you, Susan. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is eleven B. The approval slash disapproval of resolution number twenty sixteen dash twenty-one. A resolution of the council of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, authorizing and approving the submission of an application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Main Street program and authorizing the mayor to act as the Town of Silver City's chief executive officer and authorizing, and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the Town of Silver City's participation in the New Mexico Main Street Great Blocks on Main Street program. I believe Lucy Whitmarsh, Main Street Executive Director, will be presenting this.
Good evening, councilors, mayor, staff, and the community. I'm here representing Silver City Main Street, and our organization is interested in applying to New Mexico Main Street for the Great Americans Blocks Grant. And the blocks that we've chosen are the two hundred, three hundred, and four hundred blocks of Bullard Street, which goes from Broadway to Kelly, and on both sides of the street. And that is currently our entertainment district. It includes from the Little Toad, the Soco Theater, the El Sol that's under renovation currently, and the Gila Theater, which is currently for sale, so it could be for use. And the purpose of this grant from what New Mexico Main Street is proposing is that we make public infrastructure improvements that will attract private investment, and that is a path to economic growth in our downtown. So as far as the financial obligation, if we are awarded this grant, then it would be processed through the Town of Silver City, and there would be an RFP put out for a landscape architect, and we would be trying to get to the point of having construction-ready documents for the infrastructure improvements. And you may have noticed in some of our other applications and things that have been going on, and even with our, a lot of our processing that we have to do, that grants aren't even being, you aren't even able to apply for the grant unless you have construction-ready documents or you're shovel-ready with your projects. So I think this would open the door for future funding to implement the project. And as far as the actual financial obligation, the estimate is that the RFP would probably be for about seventy thousand dollars. And so, the financial obligation is twenty percent, or the obligation is twenty percent, and ten, half of that has to be in cash, so the obligation would be for seven thousand dollars in cash and in kind match of seven thousand to accommodate the fourteen thousand dollars. And specifically, what we're looking at for infrastructure improvement in that block area is pedestrian gateway entrance to the Big Dick's Park and our entertainment district, and that would be designed to bring people from the visitor's center parking lot across the Market Street pedestrian bridge and attract them into the downtown district, but have the off-street parking that's available in the visitor's center parking lot. So it's partially a gateway to our commercial district. The other thing we're looking at is streetscaping to include slowing down vehicle traffic, which is an area that we wanted to address on Bullard Street, and increased safety. And this is statewide through New Mexico. We're number one in New Mexico for pedestrian fatalities, so we certainly need to be aware of that situation. And so I think that the safety issue is also a concern that has repeatedly been brought up, but the streetscaping to include slowing down vehicle traffic and creating pedestrian-friendly entertainment venues on Yankee Market and Kelly Streets between Bullard Street and the San Jacinto Creek Big Dick's Park. And those are the little one-way streets that run between Bullard and the ditch and on those three streets, and it's to provide streetscaping that will make them more attractive and the one, as I said, at the Market Street, to make it a more inviting to come to the downtown, and also that we could use them for outdoor entertainment venues, which we are enhancing our, enhancing our entertainment district. And then also, we've been looking into pedestrian-level wayfinding signage. An example is from the Silver City Museum, even though we try to get the word out about the Silver City Museum, and it's certainly very walkable from downtown, they've had comments there that people have seen They've had comments there that people have seen reviews of it, but they didn't even realize that we had a museum downtown. So we feel that the pedestrian, street level, pedestrian-level signage will help get people in better circulation. So that's pretty much an overview of the project, and I wanted to check and see if we do have any questions.
Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say that first, I really appreciate this grant-funded opportunity and what seems to be a very small in-cash kind contribution. But I've got some concerns that in reviewing the project information that you provided, not the resolution, but the project information. And I just kind of want to ask several questions about the supporting document. I don't see anywhere in there, while I know this is being done through the town, where there's, it's meshing with what's currently occurring, as both I mentioned and, well, actually, Councilor Connoy mentioned, everyone has mentioned, is that we're doing comprehensive plan meetings. And so the comprehensive plan will be being adjusted. And I just want to make sure that when this project is, if this is funded, that there's at least an application inclusion that our Community Development Department, the development of the new comprehensive plan, that it's all meshing together, that the Chief of Police is included in the groups of folks that need to talk about the actual way of slowing down traffic, whether the suggested in the current application information that you've provided, the project information, I've just never really heard about planters being put there. I mean, I want to make sure that while we're working with Main Street, that Main Street's working with us, is working with the town. Because this is going to benefit all the town, but we really need to have the input from a variety of different groups. And I'd like to, if there's a way to incorporate that in the application and in the project information, I would really like to see it without limiting us to like specifically saying we're going to be putting planters. There may be a different type of way to slow traffic that might be more beneficial. One of the things that I know Councilwoman Smith is working on is the painting of the intersections, and it's a visually, so how would these things kind of mesh together? So my biggest concern is ensuring that these are Town of Silver City streets, that Main Street, while that's Main Street area, it's also Silver City Arts and Cultural District, and that we're all working together on the project to make sure that whatever we do is going to be friendly throughout and acknowledged throughout all the different departments in the town. So that's, that's actually my biggest concern right now, is I kind of want to see a little bit more of that, even in the project information that you give to us. And then I think the, the one thing that I would mention is the projected outcomes. I'm someone that likes to see hard numbers, and I think that any sort of application that goes forward, if you provide the current baseline and say what you expect, whether it's analyzed, that, you know, we hope to have private investment on vacant entertainment venues, that we can actually see that, you know, that it can be realized. Because I think that that's the sort of thing that grant agencies are looking for, is, you know, what's your baseline and what are you kind of conservatively hoping to get to? Because I know that when I evaluate grants for other agencies, that's what I'm looking for, is that sort of, of understanding of the community and projection of that. And I guess the last thing that I wanted to ask is, I guess when I look at downtown, I mean, I didn't realize that we only had, the entertainment district was going with the 200, 300, and 400 blocks. I consider it the whole of the way down. Because events occurred at Morning Star Parking Lot, the, you know, university just had a welcome celebration down there, the hub, there's music, there's eateries. And then if you look at College and Pope, we've got Q's Restaurant that brings in all kinds of great bands. So I kind of see our whole downtown area as really, you know, you can kind of include all of it as part of the entertainment district. And I think that at least what this Great Blocks is doing is you're actually then connecting it also to what you're doing with downtown, with the farmer's market, and what you're doing down there. And I think that, I mean, I'm sure that restricting it just to three blocks is because of the funding that's available. But I'd like us to think, you know, say, well, this is the first three blocks, rather than the other three blocks. So that kind of gives them a heads up that we're going to come back for more. So do you see what I, if it's available? So I'd like it to see something that is where we're beginning to form this really wonderful sort of all the way down with all the people that live in the area, all the people that have businesses in the area, and with the town to really, to really ramp up both our Main Street, our Silver City Arts and Cultural District, our historic Town Down Commercial District. So these are just some suggestions, but I definitely would like to see a little bit more information about how you're going to work with town staff. So that it's, it's not something that's plopped in our laps. Because I'm all about what we're doing right now with the comprehensive plan, created by Silver City for Silver City. And I'd like to see this the same way. So that's my kind of sense of words. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilor Ray?
Lucy, if you guys decide to do another one of these resolutions, and I agree with Councilor Bedison, include the upper part of Town Hall, if you want to do something like that, include all the streets there, what needs to be improved there, the Bistro, parking lot there at Morning Star, down that way also. That way, we can all be on a same boat, and we can free time please everybody, not just a certain part. And no penalty to disgrace you or anything like that, but can do that also whenever you another one. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have to add some quick comments, and that is that I'm a volunteer for Main Street. I'm not officially a member, but I have been working with Main Street and have, we've talked a lot about this Greater Blocks Grant. It's iffy. They're trying to get, you know, the money out to the towns that they think we might use it. Well, we might go through a lot of work, and they might say we don't have it. But it's not a lot of money. And the thing that's key is it says Greater Blocks. So it really requires that you identify specific blocks with some specific purpose. And the thing that excited me about this was this idea of that gateway that comes from the parking area, where I think we ought to change the name of that parking lot, call it the Gateway Parking Lot, going over the Market Street Bridge and then into a few blocks there. And I just want to say that I really think that Main Street gets it, that they need to work with everyone. When did we meet the businesses people down there? Monday? Yesterday? Okay, so yesterday, a representative from ACD and Main Street, and I and the business owners off of the Market Little Block met to talk about what would be really wonderful infrastructure that would invite people up to move into their stores. And they said the things that we all think about, lighting, you know, making it so that it's easier to walk, extending the sidewalk maybe a little bit so that it has room for a pop-up musician or artist class to be done outside. So these are, these are kind of little projects. And I just want to say, it's, it's kind of an iffy toss, but we're going to go for it, right? We're going to throw the line in there and try to get some money to improve the town. And I know that Lucy has every intention of working with the police. That was something that merchants also moved by, that we really have got to enforce the area when you put up something new, just fix that. So I'm excited, we're all learning about how to do things better.
Councilor Connoy, do you have anything?
Not there.
Okay.
He wanted to say something real quick.
Okay, change?
Mr. Mayor, Council, I just wanted to address some of Councilor Bedison's concerns. This, this grant, as Councilwoman Smith alluded to, is kind of an iffy grant at this point. This resolution actually came to you a few months back with a different project. And there was three applications across the state. All three were declined. Main Street came down, and we had a, Main Street out of Santa Fe, we had a meeting with the Main Street Director, Rich Williams, and Charlie Deans and their staff, and our Main Street organization, and some of the stakeholders in the downtown. And we did meet, we discussed the issues up at the north end on Pope, College, Bullard Intersections, and we discussed the pedestrian gateway on the bridge, we discussed the three blocks, we discussed pretty much everything in between. And we went over all of these projects with Main Street out of Santa Fe, trying to make sure that the application that we can put together is going to truly fit what they're looking for. The other is, a lot of these projects are conceptual at this point, so you don't have a lot of detail at this point, because what we're asking for funding for is to take it from a concept to a design to construction drawings. So we're not, we're not there yet. They did demand that the application have some harder numbers than the other applications that were submitted earlier in the year and declined hat. So we are going to try to put some harder employment numbers. And for some reason, it appears the state of New Mexico is truly having a difficult time understanding secondary economic impacts. They want to create jobs, and if you're not able to demonstrate the creation of jobs, they don't want to talk to you. So there's, there's a whole lot of other impacts and economic growth that doesn't necessarily create a, an identifiable position directly impacted by the project. But we are, we are all working together. As Lucy explained, the, the application will be, will be done, and we got coached. So as well as the financial commitment that is in there for the cash match, you already committed to on the previous project, and Mr. Brown's agreed to carry that over to the new project. So it's, it's not necessarily a new allocation.
Thank you. Do I hear a motion?
I have a quick question, Mayor.
Just if I could. Could you tell us which one it was that was denied?
Was the parking lot of the visitor's center?
Okay, I have a feeling that's the one. I just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Councilwoman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I move to approve Resolution Number 2016-21, a resolution of the Council of the Town of Silver City, New Mexico, authorizing and approving the submission of an application for financial assistance and project approval to the New Mexico Main Street Program, and authorizing the mayor to act as the Town of Silver City's Chief Executive Officer and authorized representative in all matters pertaining to the Town of Silver City's participation in the New Mexico Main Street Great Blocks on Main Street Program.
Do I have a motion? Is there a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second for motion is stated.
Do I have a motion and a second? Is there any further discussion?
Not there.
Would you do a roll call, please, Ann?
Councilor Bedison?
Aye.
Councilor Amon Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Aye.
Councilor Connoy?
Aye.
It is unanimous for approval. Motion passes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for a short break.
Okay, there's a second? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break.
Is that enough?
That's enough. Let's try to get there. Thank you.
Lot of cards the other day, huh? Lot of cards, the cards over the other day, the drop part, that's it, a lot of old cards.
Are you still with us, Councilor Connoy?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, great.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is 11C, the approval, disapproval of Resolution Number 2016-22, Adoption of Town of Silver City Bicycle Master Plan. There's been a lot of people spending a lot of time working on this master plan, and a lot of you are here tonight. I want to thank you for all of those efforts. Councilwoman Smith has represented the council in a big way on that committee, and so I'd like to ask her to give us a little bit of history of what they have done, and then I'll, I'll let her take it from there.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I'll start back in May of 2014. I had just been elected in March of 2014. And in May of 2014, Michelle Giese and Rebecca Sauer, I think are here, contacted me and asked me to meet with them and to talk about bicycling in Silver City. And over the next five months, we met a number of times. We met with members of the Community Development Department, and I began seeking and mentoring from Mr. Brown about how to proceed and things like this. They provided me with a stack of papers and lots of information, I think it was about this high end, that they kept peppering me with links of things to read. And I remember both Michelle and Rebecca telling me how hard they had been working on bicycling as bicycling advocates for the Town of Silver City. And I'm just going to say, they essentially begged me to help, to be the elected official to champion moving the process forward. I'm going to say that in the town staff, I found a great deal of encouragement and support. Mr. Alex Brown stated clearly that the town needed such a plan and encouraged me to go forth as a way of learning and as to really get something done. He clarified the processes of how the town does grant proposals and works with consultants, and expressed a great deal of pleasure every time I came and told him what was going on. And Jamie Embek, at the time, who was not yet the Community Development Director, came up with some wild plans about, about how to get bicycles around town. Zip lines was one of the first ones. We're not going to do that. So therefore, one of my first formal acts as a town council was to carry Resolution 2014-38, which was a resolution authorizing and approving financial assistance and project approval to develop the bicycle master plan. And that was passed on December 9th, 2014. So I'm going to say here that giving an idea to an initiative, from start to finish, requires many steps in C. You have to have a champion, C, a champion, to motivate you of the idea. You have to have C, coordination, to get moving pieces fitted together. You have to have another C, competence and expertise, to bring in the knowledge to get things done. Another C is community engagement, because we, as a town, and our citizens in the community are the ones who really are going to use what's going to be developed in the plan. So we have to know that the ones who are most affected are engaged. Another C is compromise. Any initiative needs some compromise. Because we have another C, constraints. So here's a famous line, "You can't get everything you want, but if you try some time, you find you get what you need." And I think that this bicycle master plan brings us what we need. And the last C that we'll be looking forward to now is capital, tons of money to fund the initiative. So in my role as councillor, I served as the initial C, champion, to get the formal ball rolling. But I do not want to infer that all of the work just started in 2014, nay, rather, a platform of work, representing hundreds of hours of effort from community bicycle advocates and staff in the town, had already been laid. After Resolution 2014-38 passed, our town manager, Alex Brown, worked quite hard cobbling together the funding from a variety of sources to pay for the plan. And then he delegated tasks to get the application and for funding. I want to acknowledge that our office of Sustainability Director Denise Smith, I'd like to... that our Office of Sustainability Director, Denise Smith, I'd like you to come and get ready to do your part up here. So Denise Smith, who is skilled in writing grants, also made sure that the call for proposals was launched and the best C consultant hired, that C competent expertise. And she's going to continue to speak here, because she's going to talk about her role as C, coordinating the consulting firm of the town and the community engagement.
Thank you, Linda. Um, Mayor, councilors, town staff, my name is Denise Smith. I'm the Director for the Office of Sustainable, Sustainability for the Town of Silver City. And we did apply for that funding in December of 2014, and we heard back pretty quickly that NMFA would provide 25% of the funding. And so in March of 2015, we went out with a request for quotes. We only got one, um, proposal, and that was from Community By Design, that they had included a couple of subcontractors, including Tim Rogers, who is a transportation planner, and Paige Winslet, who's a project planner who did the mapping for this project. In November of 2015, we, we got a signed contract with the, with the contractor. And then in January 2016 is when we formed a stakeholder group or steering committee, and they, that included bicycle advocates, New Mexico Department of Transportation, the Grand County Health Department, Health of Kids. But there's some of that steering committee, there's a few of those people here tonight, and I want to recognize them formally. Would you please stand up? Those that were on the bicycle steering committee? Thank you. So these are the movers and shakers on this, and these are folks who've been waiting for this for a long time, like Linda said. Uh, we had two public meetings and three stakeholder meetings. Uh, the stakeholder meetings, they started in February, um, that was a stakeholder meeting, then in April, we had a public meeting. There were 34 attendees, and a couple more stakeholder meetings, and then in June, on June 22nd, we had a second public meeting that had 17 attendees. We put the, the draft plan out for public review and got quite a few comments that we passed on to the consultants. And so here we are tonight, ready to adopt that plan if, if it's approved by the town council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. So Denise did a hard work of trying to coordinate a variety of moving pieces together, and when we did have the final draft from the consultants, and I want to emphasize the term draft there. So what was put out to the community was drafted, as, as she said, we got a lot of comments, which then got passed around to the consultants and to the staff. So when the final draft from Community by Design was, was brought in, James Marshall was appointed by Alex Brown to take on the task of coordinating communication with the town staff. And I would like to ask Mr. Marshall to speak about that now.
Thank you, Councilor Amon. Yes, Mayor, Council. When, when I got my involvement, it's, it's quite interesting that since Mayor Ladner took office, we've been held quite accountable to the previous planning efforts. And these plans truly have to be a marching order for the staff, and we take that very serious, and I think we've demonstrated over the last several months that, that we are following a multitude of plans. So we, we took the plan and, and we had staff review of the plan. The staff that was involved was the fire chief, the police chief, the public works director, the town manager, um, utilities director, not sure why that one, but he wasn't either, the community development director and myself. And one of the biggest things that we found was that the plan is a bicycle plan, and it's designed in that silo that was not a comprehensive transportation plan. It is a piece of a comprehensive transportation plan, and it is very, very important that as we put together the transportation issues of the town, that we include this as a, as a major piece. It is a part of the existing comprehensive plan, and is listed as a, as a goal in the comprehensive plan to develop a bicycle pedestrian and trails plan. So taking that into consideration, some of the, the criteria that we used in evaluating was obviously safety. And strangely enough, that was one of the words that was left out of the draft and, and their goals. So we make sure that got put in. Some of it is that one of the, probably another C that Councilor Amon Smith mentions is, a lot of the funding sources are competing. So we wanted to be very, very careful that in the future, when, when you hold us accountable for following our plans, that we're actually following and presenting something back to the council for approval, that we can actually follow. So most of the language was, um, modified in the plan to ensure that we were doing the proper studies and making sure that there was, the, the appropriate benefits were measured, that the other areas of, that impact our transportation system are considered, and if it's truly implementable. And so that was pretty much what, what we looked at, and then we came up and we, we submitted the edits. And I guess Monday morning, we met again with the consultant, and I don't want to step on your toes, Councilor, but we, we did have a conversation with our consultant, Community by Design, where we, um, they were agreeable to either exclude their recommendations, and we did include one. And, um, the town manager has asked that we amend the credit sheet, so that I get some of the blame. So if you like my name first, I'd like it second, where it belongs. So, Councilor.
So thank you. So one of the things that was really important for me as a, a councilor, is as a, as a person who wants to push legislation and plans, I don't ever, ever, ever want to try to commit the town to something that we really shouldn't be doing. And neither do I want to try to commit the town to something that we really can't do. So we really have to, as legislators, think about the process that we're creating, or the processes that potentially are created. So for example, I'm going to give an example here. It was absolutely vital that Peter Penya, who's the Public Works Director, really reviewed what was in the document, because he's got the experience and the expertise about our street system and how to really work, work with that. And I'm going to say here that I really now consider Mr. Penya a strong ally in bicycles and pedestrian safety, a strong ally. With, and I'll give an example, with his help, big help, not just little help, big writing, a lot of review and writing and numbers and thought. Yesterday, Mr. Penya, Ms. Denise Smith, other town members and I, attended a meeting with the regional New Mexico Department of Transportation, representatives refunding some projects. Two projects directly related, directly coming from this bicycle plan. So I don't want anyone out there saying, yeah, yeah, you're going to put a plan on a shelf. No, it's already being worked up, okay? So in a sense, this plan describes infrastructure changes to de, to increase bicycling, bicycling uh, safety, bicycling quality of life in the town. And there are added benefits to those infrastructure changes. So I've started learning everything that I now know about traffic calming because of being engaged in this process. So the benefits will be, as Mr. Marshall said, part of the more comprehensive transportation plan. I do want to acknowledge, there are some changes from the draft that was on the town website, because that was a draft. And the big ones that I want to say is that we shifted language from sounding like mandates, that we were going to be doing things that really may be weren't within our purview. So we shifted from mandates to noting that further research and analysis would lead to future actions. We removed suggested projects that were already substantially underway. So why say that we're going to put bike lanes on Silver Street when we already have? And we eliminated project suggestion regarding the underpass under 180 as a trail that's right in the Rio. By meanwhile, we have switched my legs if I had planned in the Rio in the Bronson season. And so we're not going to put that in there. And we certainly changed the language where, to make it really clear where we were going to be working as a partner, encouraging and doing work with the Department of Transportation, because we can't tell them what to do. So I will make a motion in just a second to approve this, but I'm going to say that we're going to make one more amendment, which is a substantive change. So, Mr. Mayor, are we ready?
Well, you're doing pretty good.
Pretty good.
Enjoying just sitting back and watching the show.
So I'll make a motion.
What you're witnessing tonight is a really significant thing. In the past, committees have met, developed plans, councils have approved them, but in many cases, there were things in there that just wasn't possible to do. And so they sat on the shelf. And so this is a great example now of a new direction of all of us working together as a team to get some things done. And I'm pretty excited about this whole process. Councilor Amon Smith?
Sure. I move to approve Resolution Number 2016 dash 22, Adoption of the Town of Silver City's Bicycle Master Plan with this amendment that on page 31, subtitle, to delete the text that says, but does not repeat, because essentially, we have agreed that when we have a convergence of recommendations for things like the trails, the greenways, and the bicycle master plan, that convergence should be acknowledged. Okay?
Do I hear a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second to the motion is stated.
Thank you. Uh, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Councilor Ray?
Again, this is just a plan. Nothing is concrete until the final paperwork is done. So this is just a plan. It could be changed and it probably will be changed, but let us remember this, just a plan. Thank you.
Okay. Councilor Bedison?
Thank you, Mayor. I have to say that both Councilor Amon Smith and yourself and, and Mr. Marshall have pretty much covered most of my comments. I, all I can say is I'm incredibly impressed. After being on a council since 2009, this is the first time that I have seen a plan where the wording is not mandates, but it's, 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 it's considering things. It's, 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 you know, promoting ideas, it's promoting ways to come together, to work together. And I cannot thank everyone who's ever done any editing, any writing, or anything on this plan, because it is one of the most comprehensive and inclusive plans. While you say it was created within a silo, there's still discussions about pedestrian access, ADA, um, you know, car, and pedestrian and bicycle conflicts that could occur. And I have to say, I'm incredibly impressed with the whole road diet thing. I'm not taking a road that's already 50 feet wide and being able to put it on a diet that it has bicycle lanes, it has more facility for people to move, it's safer for everyone. And, and I, I just can't say enough how impressed I am, because this is one of the best plans that I have ever seen come before me as a council member, and I'm looking forward to the comprehensive plan being created, the, the new one being created in the same vein, because I really, really like the wording and tone of this document. It's very, as the mayor said, it's a new day. We're coming together, we're really doing something that's going to benefit everyone, and we're working together to get it done. So, thank you.
Okay. Any other comments or discussion? Well, we have a motion and a second. Would you do a roll call, please, Ann?
Councilor Bedison?
Aye.
Councilor Amon Smith?
Aye.
Councilor Ray?
Yes.
Councilor Connaught?
Aye.
The motion to adopt the Town of Silver City Bicycle Master Plan is read, passes unanimously. This concludes the business of the Silver City Town Council. Do I hear a motion?
I'm, I'm all too tired.
Okay. Motion is a second?
Mr. Mayor, a second motion.
Motion passes.
Oh, oh.
Okay.
Hi.
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 Okay.
You too.